I'm not sure. Cap, do you know?
No, you can park either with parks or all the main so that veterans more drive across the street.
Well, somebody told me to go into the parking deck. I went to the parking deck and it's five hours. I think that's ridiculous. So what do I do? I mean, the signs all pointed into the parking deck. It said to civics.
Our meeting. We're live.
This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Law. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided. This meeting of August fifth, two thousand twenty-four was published in the Courier-News and the Star-Ledger and placed on the borough's website. Notice of this meeting was also placed in the bulletin board at Borough Hall with the complete agenda. A copy of this notice is available to the public and a copy of the statement shall be included in the minutes of this meeting. Mayor Brian Gallagher excused, council members Teresa Bonner, here. Glenn Denis excused, Tom Mitchell.
Here.
Randy Pitts.
Here.
Gina Stravick.
Here.
Roger Room.
Here. Please stand and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We had a motion to approve the minutes of July fifteenth.
So moved.
Second. Roll call. Teresa Bonner.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Room.
Yes. Departmental reports and notices are as listed. Tonight we have two proclamations. I believe that we have Mr. Griggs here this evening. He is here. The proclamation that we have is for, we are declaring September twenty twenty-four to be National Service Dog Month in the borough of Somerville, Somerset County of New Jersey. Whereas we believe in the joyful transformative power of the human canine bond and exclusivity of all citizens. And whereas sixty-four million American adults and children have a disability. There are only sixteen thousand service dogs from accredited programs in the United States. And less than one percent of people with disabilities that could qualify have a service dog. And whereas Canine Companions is a nonprofit organization that enhances the lives of people with disabilities by providing expertly trained service dogs and ongoing support to ensure quality partnerships. And whereas Canine Companions and their service dogs empower people with disabilities to lead a life with greater independence by providing best-in-class training, ongoing follow-up services, and a deeply committed community of support. And whereas Canine Companions has more than twenty-eight hundred active teams throughout the country, and they have placed eight thousand teams since their founding. There are five hundred people on the waitlist looking to be matched with an expertly trained service dog. And whereas it's important that our community understands the benefits of task-trained service dogs, and a proclamation will raise awareness of the rights of service dog users, including Canine Companions clients. Please join us in honoring service dog teams and their amazing work. Therefore, be it resolved that the mayor of Somerville, Brian Gallagher, and the borough of Somerville hereby proclaim September twenty twenty-four to be National Service Dog Month in the borough of Somerville, Somerset County of New Jersey, in the borough of Somerville, New Jersey. Today, August eighth, August fifth, twenty twenty-four. Mr. Griggs?
That's okay. Um, I just like to thank everyone for acknowledging Canine Companions and the work that they do. Um, I'm a, I'm a Gulf War veteran with PTSD, so if I start, I apologize. You might see me walking around here in the morning at six, seven o'clock with my PTSD service dog. Unfortunately, it's too hot, so that's why I left him home. I definitely thank you for supporting us and letting everyone know about our service dogs.
Thank you for your good work. Thank you for your service. We have another proclamation, September twenty-third through September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four, as diaper need awareness week. Uh, so do we have, Kevin, we don't have anyone here for that?
I don't think there's anybody here to accept that.
Okay.
So we'll take it back to our office and make sure the right people get it.
Fantastic, sir. Thank you. And with service dogs, I've seen the benefit of service dogs. As I was in education and we, we had a few service dogs that would come in through the building and the students were always so thrilled to see them. Uh, and it really made, they, a lot of times they spent time in the guidance office. Uh, the service dogs were, were there and to see the, the kids go down even for a few minutes and see the smile on their face when they got to pet the dog and, and have a few minutes with them and then go back to their classes. I, I think that people, more people need to realize just the impact it has from that little furry moment that, that gets you through the rest of the day. So thank you, sir. Committee reports. Uh, we will start with Mr. Mitchell.
Okay. The, the Historic Advisory Committee did not meet in July, so there's nothing to report from them. Uh, our insurance company, Aetna, has reported that third-party solicitors are recruiting employees to use facilities which are out-of-network providers. Employees are advised to check with Aetna before using a doctor or medical facility for which they have been solicited. The Cultural and Heritage Commission is now accepting applications for the twenty twenty-five County Historic Partnership Program grant. Funds support local history organizations and other nonprofits to provide public history projects, programs, and services to benefit public audiences. Grant awards are competitive. Go to the county website, co.samerset nj.us and enter C H P P in the search box. RideWise has partnered with Immaculata High School to conduct a safety audit of the crosswork, crosswalk across Mountain Avenue. They found that cars passing through the crosswalk failed to stop for pedestrians thirty-four percent of the time. Gotta have some more enforcement down there. Finally, the national night out has been canceled this year due to projected rain. Thank you very much.
Gina.
So on behalf of the Somerville Rescue Squad, I'd like to share that, um, the squad buried one of its, um, longtime auxiliary members, Alice Gunzleman. Many of you know, uh, former, uh, Fire Chief Roy Gunzleman, uh, Gunzleman name is well-known in the community. Uh, and Roy's wife did pass away, uh, last week and, uh, she was, uh, buried on Saturday, um, with, with full Rescue Squad color. So, um, our best to, uh, to Roy and the family and, um, uh, thank you for their leadership to our community throughout the, the fifty years, um, that they've served. In terms of the Health Department, uh, the Health Department, uh, the Health Committee has not met, but, uh, the Health Department does send us, um, regular notices. Um, there's two things just to alert the community to, uh, one being, um, the increase in COVID the past, uh, month. So, uh, July numbers are up, uh, up in, in terms of what we were last year in January. So COVID's kind of making a resurgence, um, and I'm sure there's many more cases than are reported. Um, and then also West Nile has hit New Jersey, so, um, like any, any other illnesses, uh, something to be aware of, uh, if we're, uh, keep our, our, our water, not that we have much rain lately, uh, but keep puddles and, and water collections, uh, out of your, uh, backyards so that, uh, we don't attract the mosquitoes and so on. So that's the report I have.
Teresa.
It's been a slow couple weeks, so I actually don't have anything to report this time.
Thank you. Randy?
Thank you, Your Honor. From our Community Police Division, after careful consideration and monitoring the weather forecast, as Councilman Mitchell said, tomorrow's National Night Out event at Carroll Page Park Exchange Field is canceled. The safety of our community is top priority. At this time, no rain date has been scheduled. Look for further updates on the Somerville PD's social media accounts and the Borough website. In DSA News, uh, this Saturday, weather permitting, is the first annual back-to-school business crawl. Come out to support your local businesses with special offers and giveaways. Also participating are the Somerville Library and the Somerville Police Department with Pizza with a Cop. That'll be on Division Street from twelve to two P M. Pizzas are donated by Calabria Mia, uh, Prima Pizza, and Alfonso's. You're encouraged to bring a school supply donation during this time. Uh, participating businesses will be outside for this sidewalk sale event. And last but not least, please mark your calendars, uh, for the Artisan Fair on Division Street, August twenty-fifth, twelve to five P M. The DSA will sponsor a rock painting craft and entertainment. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Uh, just a few things from the, um, from the Recreation Committee. Uh, the August eighteenth is the last day of the pools. Uh, Spray Parks will stay open until September, mid-September. Uh, do not forget, if you are so interested, that the early bird registration for the turkey trot is until the end of this month. Um, and as has been said before, obviously, National Night Out is canceled. Um, there's a lot of working, working, uh, parts that, that go towards these events. And so i- it's essential that, you know, as, as was said in, in, uh, Randy's message, that, you know, the, uh, our citizens come first and we have to make sure that we're, we hold these events and, and that they're, you know, not put in danger. And, and it sounds like we're gonna get some, some pretty nasty weather coming up. Um, so we appreciate the, the notice and the cancellation, um, and, and will look forward to next year. Uh, and just as another, uh, aside, the Planning Board meetings for this month of August, uh, have been canceled. Uh, so the Planning Board will not be meeting this month. Uh, next we have, uh, a mayoral appointment. Um, Councilman Denis will be the Borough Representative for the tour of Somerville. And, uh, tonight we have a discussion item, which is the business insurance registration. Uh, this is a state law that is in effect. Um, and Mr. Saluka is gonna discuss what the state law means and how the borough is going to approach the, uh, the implementation.
Thank you. So, so we do expect an ordinance introduction at the next meeting. The idea was, uh, uh, several of us have had to discuss this briefly to talk about how we wanna roll it out and implement it. So the idea was to bring it to this meeting more as a discussion item before we actually introduce the ordinance. And what it's about is in twenty twenty-two, the state of New Jersey passed, um, the, this law, which required, um, which requires the municipality to take a role in, in collection of insurance certificates, which it never had to do before, of, of business owners and owners of properties with rental units. Like a lot of these laws that the state, uh, does put out, sometimes they're knee-jerk reactions and there may not have the formal process in place to make sure this law happens correctly. So just recently, we've, we've, we're getting through our one phase of, of laws that took place in twenty twenty-two, which was the lead inspections. This is kind of the next phase of municipalities really getting involved in, in that type of business. So it, it does, it will require more of a cooperative effort from a lot of the departments, um, which would include the Housing Office, the Zoning Office, the Fire Official, the, the Construction Official, and the collection of that data will be within the Clerk's Office. So Xena, myself, and Jennifer will be collecting these certificates. Uh, it is not completely understood as to the process that will come on, other than the fact that we will be getting the word out there that, that everybody has to give us a copy of this. And we'll create our own internal database until the state has something that becomes, uh, more formal for us to use. So we'll, we'll be collecting it in our, our Spatial Data Logic program, which will basically enable us to, to, uh, collect the information in order to enable that, that the person supplying us is not in violation. So where this is coming up is because when there's issues with landlord tenancy, they're gonna wanna make sure that, that there's a certificate on file. That's where it's gonna come up. You know, in our research, there hasn't been a lot of municipalities that have got this far yet. So we're not necessarily sure of the hurdles that we'll face along the way. But I did prepare a kind of guideline of what we anticipate happening. We'll be sending out letters to, to people within the municipality that, that we believe, uh, are tenants of spaces and land, landowners of spaces. In addition to that, every fire inspection that gets done, the fire official will also be notifying that property owner or that tenant that this law is required. As well as construction, if we do a, uh, if there's an inspection through, um, the Construction Office, they'll notify. The DSA is going to have to do a communication, a zoning checklist. It's gonna be part of zoning checklist. So if someone wants to come in and, and, and open up a business or, or look to do something, the Zoning Office is gonna have on a heart checklist to make sure that we're supplied that information and of course, property maintenance. So that'll be the effort from a communication side. We, we don't necessarily have all the identified properties that are required to provide this to us yet. So that'll be a collection of data as well. And, uh, and it'll be kind of a large education, uh, process. The municipality is deciding at this point there'll be no fee to provide this information. The state law does provide an opportunity. And the reason they do that is because under the state law, since when they do a state mandate, they're supposed to fund this. But what they do is, is the way that's kind of worked around is they off, they tell the municipalities, hey, you could charge a fee for this. But again, this would be imposing another fee on, on folks that, that really are supplying us the information. So we're opting with the ordinance, the introduction next week, not to charge a fee. However, there is a penalty phase. So what'll happen is, is, is once the person's notified they have to supply it and they fail to do so, then we would be able to provide them a, a warning letter saying, hey, you need to give us this information. And it's gonna come in a form as a certificate. And if they don't, or they obviously don't want to, then they'll be notified of the penalty phase and then we could assess a penalty. I, I don't particularly think the courts wanna be burdened with summonses like this, so the whole idea is just get compliance. So you'll be hearing more about that, um, you know, and again, people may ask, why am I giving this to the municipality? So now, you know, you'll know what that's all about. The ordinance wouldn't really take effect till January of twenty twenty-five. While we will go through the effort of trying to get information, um, and get the certificates, there'll be no penalties or warnings issued until twenty twenty-five. I have consulted with a couple insurance folks in the municipality and they have said that they, they knew the law came out and they have told their clients, hey, listen, you know, if your municipality asks you for this, they need to get a copy of it. So, and we'll kind of use those insurance folks as, as the agent to kind of help us get that information as well. So that, that's where we sit with this now. Um, things may develop, uh, you know, further on us. Um, but it, we're really going through an education phase for the next couple months to educate, uh, both property. I, when I say property owners, it has to be, if it's a, if it's a owner-occupied home, two, three, or four family, they have to supply that to us. The businesses or, or the rental properties have to supply it to us. And, and property owners that, that have rentals have to supply it to us. So i- it is, it is fairly large. There are a couple municipalities that, in Somerset County, that are working through some of the hurdles on this. So we, we, Xena and I are gonna collaborate with them. And then we'll see, we'll see how that develops and I'll kind of keep everybody appraised and that's where we'll be at.
Kevin, will businesses that operate out of homes, you know, there's several plumbers in town that have their trucks and tools in their garages and, and, uh, landscapers that have their gear in their driveways, is, is that also part of that?
No. So if they, if they own a home and they occupy the home, it's a single occupancy home, and the business is in that home, they, they won't have a requirement to do that. It, it's really, I guess the intent is to help protect the tenants to know, to basically let them know that, you know, that property is insured. In addition, the reverse is also true, right? So the tenants are, are protecting the landlord, letting them know they're carrying insurance when it comes to commercial properties as well. So, so, um, you know, hopefully I did answer your, your question, Councilman. So that's where, where we're at. I think, and you'll see a lot on social media. I will tell you, as I investigated this throughout Somerset County and Hunterdon County and, and, and Union County, we are now getting calls from those folks in other municipalities saying, let us know what you're doing, cause we like to kind of mimic. And that always does help a little for all kind of playing by the same vision. But, but it is a law that has taken a, a, a backseat to a lot of more important things. So as, as we roll this out, I'm sure you'll see it rolled out in other municipalities as well.
You know, um, ideally, if, if to save staff time in, in Borough Hall, if we were able just to have a portal where it could be uploaded, you know, submit your insurance, proof of insurance here and, and fill out this form online, I, I would think that would save a whole lot of time.
Yeah, I, I will, thank you. I, I will talk to Patty about that. We did find out through this process, the initial law actually called for the state to actually create a portal and do that. Uh, that has been amended and they're no longer taking a role in this. Um, so this is strictly municipal, but that's an excellent idea to talk to Patty and see if we could do something. Cause that is actually what the state is doing right now for the, uh, lead, uh, abatement law. They, their portal they rolled out today, while they do have to make some changes to it, it allows, uh, the certificate just to be uploaded and, and to, and, and for the contractor to actually fill out the information. So we'll, you know, we'll certainly see where that goes. And I'm sure that, um, with, with the program that we're using, as they develop their portal, that, that would probably likely a, a scenario for the contractor to go in and do that as well. But thank you.
Does this also apply to, uh, state licensed businesses?
Could you give me an example?
Uh, rooming houses, for example.
Um, I believe a rooming house would have to comply with this.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll, I'll double-check that. Um, and like I said, it's kind of a learning curve. The only thing I would say is if the law specifically mentions two, three, and four families, it doesn't speak, speak to rooming houses. So that, I would probably need to get some further clarity in it.
Well, we also, also have issues in town, which I believe we have unregistered Airbnbs.
Yeah, and, and my understanding is that, uh, we don't have an ordinance against Airbnbs now, so.
No, but if we're, uh, understood, but, uh, thinking, thinking that through, if we're trying to protect tenants and in effect, they're a tenant.
Any other questions? Comments?
And I would say as things develop, please just, you know, talk to Xena and I and, and we'll kind of, like I said, we're, we're learning as we go. I think, again, a lot of these laws have a lot of little holes in it that if we can kind of fill those holes along the way would help.
Anything else? Okay. Uh, at this time, I, uh, move to, or, uh, request a motion to open the meetings to the public?
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Teresa Bonner.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Room.
Yes. Uh, please approach the mic, uh, name and address and address your comments to me. Public session is open.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Dennis Solomon, eight South Richards Avenue. I'm here to talk about taxes, everyone's favorite topic in August. Generally, if you have a taxpayer in the audience, right after the tax bills come out, you'd be anticipating something negative. But I will say right now, that's not the case.
Hold on. Dennis. Dennis, use, just use the, the one there. It, that, that mic went out again. It just, it went off.
Did it turn on?
Just press the, you're good. Just press the button. Sorry. I, I, I don't know why that just went off. Just, there you go.
Now I'm on. Okay. I took the time to look at the little box on the tax bill, which everybody does, and said, oh, my taxes went up. Big surprise. Well, upon further investigation, and you know how I love numbers, my two-hundred-and-eight-dollar tax increase broke down the following way. Forty-five dollars and seventy-five cents increase in county taxes, or four percent. My school tax went up one-hundred-and-fifty-one dollars and one cent for a three percent increase. And my municipal taxes, for which the mayor and council are responsible, went up eleven dollars and forty-four cents, or four tenths of one percent. So of my aggregate, two-hundred-and-eight dollars, eleven dollars is on you folks. I think the public needs to realize the fact, excuse me, the fact that this governing body, for years and through many different administrations, has been very, very careful and cognizant of where the money to run the operation comes from. And you can look back ten, twelve years and these numbers, uh, are reflective of, of where we are. In fact, the borough share of the tax bill dropped this year from twenty-nine percent to twenty-eight percent. Yes, your taxes went up. But I think it's important for people to look beyond the little box. And, and we all know, you probably did it yourself when you got your coupon. You looked at it and you said, yeah, they went up. They did go up. But I would challenge the public to look beyond the numbers. Look at the decisions that we collectively has ma, have made through the last twenty years on generating revenue to fund the borough, but not only to generate the revenue, but to use it wisely. And I think we're seeing that, cause the numbers don't lie. When your borough tax goes up, and I did an average calculation, cause my house is slightly lower. I did an average calculation. The average tax bill in Somerville went up two-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars. Fourteen dollars to the town, fifty-four dollars to the county, and one-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars to the schools. If people are dissatisfied with their taxes, I would encourage them to come here, but also to go to Grove Street and to Cliff Street to talk to those governing bodies as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about the mic issue. Any other comments this evening? Seeing no other, motion to close?
So moved.
Councilmember Teresa Bonner.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Room.
Yes. Public session is closed. We have an ordinance for introduction this evening, two-seven-three-eight-two-four-zero-eight-zero-five. Amending ordinance number twenty-seven-thirty-five-twenty-four-dash-twenty-four-dash-zero-five-zero-six, establishing a salary range for employee titles to be paid to certain officers and employees of the borough of Somerville. As has been the practice this year, I, uh, am asking for a motion to open to the public, uh, for this introduction.
So moved. Second.
Councilmember Teresa Bonner.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravick?
Yes.
Roger Room?
Yes. So, at this time, if anyone has any comments about this ordinance, you may approach the mic. Seeing none, motion to close?
Can I speak before that, or my part of the public, or just a comment?
When we, before we vote to approve?
Okay.
Okay, so moved. Second?
Council
You close the poll?
Yes.
Councilmember Teresa Bonner?
Yes.
Tom Mitchell?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes.
Gina Stravick?
Yes.
Roger Room?
Yes. Now, is the motion to introduce, so I need a, a first, a
So moved. Second?
All right, and then you had a comment, question?
Yeah, comment. This does not go down to minimum wage, so there is a category for seasonal health. So, if we wanted to hire a youngster for the summer, we would be paying them a minimum of eighteen dollars according to this scale, not fifteen, thirteen, which is the current minimum wage. So, just a point of thought.
Which is a good thing. Right?
Well, I, I mean, I, I go through the semi-employment, you, you know, if you're fifteen years old and eligible for employment, let's say as a lifeguard, we're hiring our lifeguard, yeah, it'd be great to make eighteen dollars an hour, but when you go to hire that same more seasoned person in, say, seasonal maintenance, are you gonna pay them, you know, the same amount as a fifteen-year-old? That, that's where it, it gets sticky, so I think it just gives you further wiggle room to have a lower wage for a, a young person, but just my two cents.
My experience, my experience, Councilwoman, I certainly appreciate your, your thought on that. Our experience has been that, that, that we're not successful in getting people at that number. And, and it's been adjusted a little over the years. We've kind of stayed above minimum wage a little, but for the most part, you know, getting folks at eighteen dollars an hour in the, in this environment is, is difficult in itself. But certainly, you know, if you wanted a minimum wage, the only negative is that we do have to move, change this ordinance again every time that moves, so we're a little ahead of that curve. That, that, there were other, obviously, there were other title changes in there, but that, that's where that, you know, that number at eighteen dollars an hour is, is usually, is likely the number that we could usually secure someone to work for us.
All right, so the motion is to
I'd like to just, to, to just add a comment.
Sure.
This is, this is pretty much an annual ordinance. We, we do this every year. As inflation raises prices, wages and salaries go up in parallel, and every year we raise the, the rates. As our former mayor just pointed out, we have been keeping the overall cost of doing business steady as best we can, and I think, you know, just, you know, we, we try to cover our increasing costs with increasing revenues, and hopefully, we will, we will be able to do that. And all we have to do is, is keep our fingers crossed. That's about it.
Thank you, Tom. So, the, the motion on the floor is for introduction? It's been motioned in second. Roll call?
Councilmember Teresa Bonner?
Yes.
Tom Mitchell?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes.
Gina Stravick?
Yes.
Roger Room?
Yes. Thank you. Next up, our consent resolutions. Are there any that anyone would like to be, have pulled this evening?
Yes, the first one, ending in two two five.
Okay. Any others? So, I'll go through the list. Number two two six, creating a title Assistant to the CFO slash Deputy Tax Collector. Two two seven, authorizing the execution of a facility use agreement with Somerset County Park Commission and Borough of Somerville for the temporary use of the parking area at the Torpe Athletic Complex. Two twenty-eight, approving road closure for East Main Street from Grove Street to Bridge Street on Sunday, September fifteenth, from nine A.M. to eight P.M. for the 2024 Central Jersey Jazz Fest. Two twenty-nine, accepting the 2023 municipal audit and execution of the group affidavit certifying the general comments and recommendations made by the auditor has been reviewed. Two thirty, approving tax overpayment refund 2024 for Forty Fairview Avenue, Block Fifty-one, Lot Eighteen Point Oh One. Two thirty-one, memorializing the execution of a consent for a right, rights-of-way agreement with Cable Vision Light Path LLC. Two thirty-two, authorizing a refund of sixty dollars to Michael and Susan Park from the garbage decals account. Two thirty-three, approving road closure for Artisan Fair, August twenty-fifth, 2024, nine A.M. to five on Division Street between South Street and Veterans Memorial Drive. Two thirty-four, canceling uncollectible taxes for Block Thirty-six dot zero one, Lot Fifteen. Two thirty-five, requesting permission for the dedication by Ryder for revenues derived from donations to the Police Department K-9 Unit, NJSA Forty-A colon fifty dash twenty-nine. And two thirty-six, approving Chapter One Five Nine from the National Opioids Settlement Trust. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second?
Councilmember Teresa Bonner?
Yes.
Tom Mitchell?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes.
Gina Stravick?
Yes.
Roger Room?
Yes. And now we have number two two five, consenting to the proposed Northeast Upper Raritan and Lower Raritan Middlesex County Water Quality Management, also known as the WQM Plan Amendment. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second?
Discussion.
Yeah, just a couple questions. I assume this is a required legislation coming out of county or state offices, but my question is, is do we have any septic systems in Somerville?
So, I spoke to Walter Lane, we do not have any registered septic systems. So, what happens is, is every municipality has to adopt the amendment to the Water Quality Management Plan. It doesn't affect us at all. So, so that's an excellent question, but, yeah, they have no septic on file or something.
Thank you.
Any further? Roll call?
Councilmember Teresa Bonner?
Yes.
Tom Mitchell?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes.
Gina Stravick?
Yes.
Roger Room?
Yes. Now comes to the paying of bills and vouchers. I make a motion to pay bills and vouchers in the amount of one million, two hundred and ninety thousand, six hundred forty-nine dollars and thirty-four cents.
Second? Councilmember Teresa Bonner?
Yes.
Tom Mitchell?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes.
Gina Stravick?
Yes.
Roger Room?
Yes. Mr. Mitchell, take us home.
Yeah, just before I call for adjournment, I just want to remind everybody that taxes are due this month. They've been extended because of the delay in getting the, the tax bills out, but they are due by, I believe, the twenty-eighth. Is that correct, Kevin?
I believe that's the correct date. I'll make sure it's on the website correct.
And if you miss the date, the interest is calculated back to the beginning of the month. So, that being said, I may, I move for adjournment.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Meeting adjourned.